Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Brevard City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, October 20th. And I just want to say how wonderful it is to see so many members of the public here. I love it when we have so many people. Wonderful. And I'm sure we have a lot of people out there watching on the livestream. So whether you're here in person or with the livestream, it's great that you're participating in our local government. I want to start by introducing the people sitting up here. On my far right is our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to Mac is city councilman Lauren Wise. Next to Lauren is councilwoman Pamela Holder. Next to Pamela is councilman Mac Morrow. Next to Mac is me, Mayor Maureen Kopeloff. On my immediate left is our city clerk Denise Hodgson. Next to Denise is Mayor Protem and Councilman Gary Daniel. He has so many titles, I got to get them straight, you know. Next to Gary is Councilman Erin Baker. And next to Erin is our city manager, Wilson Hooper. And with that, I am very pleased that tonight we have Pastor Marshall Erwin from Bethel Baptist Church who is joining us. And Pastor Erwin is going to give us the invocation. Pastor, if you would come up here, please.
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and pray over this evening. And I want to assure you that tonight would not be the only time I've been praying for you. But I'm making my business to continue to pray for you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I have come humbly beseeching you, dear God, for your guidance and for your wisdom, for our mayor and for this council, as they will be going in a little while making decisions that will affect this community, this town, and the quality of the lives of the people. And for that, Lord, we need your guidance, because only you know the ending from the beginning. We don't know all, but you do. And you can surely direct them in the decisions that they're to make. If I know that, Father, they'll lean on you, then what they decide is going to be for the best. We thank you, Father, for the leadership that you provided through the years through our mayor and through this council. We continue to ask that, God, you will look on them, each of them, and impart in them your wisdom. Thank you for that. Thank you for each of them, for their lives and for their families. And I pray that you will bless them and protect them and keep them, Lord. Now, you preside this meeting, and let me sit what you have said and done what you have done. And we thank you now. Amen.
Pastor, would you tell us a little bit about your church?
Yes. I'm the pastor of, I say, the best church in Brevard.
You might have some competition here.
Stay seated.
It's okay.
We are a small church, but we are a close church, family-oriented, community-oriented. And we have a food pantry that we try so to reach out to the community, being very successful in doing that. We've been in this business for 159 years now. I don't look that old, but that's how long I've been there. And just glad to be up in a town like we're in to serve people that we serve. And it's just a blessing. And feel free, any of you near the church you come to, come anytime. Brussels, East Main, Mills Avenue.
Well, thank you. And we are so thankful to have you and your congregation. Our faith community is such an important part of our community. So thank you for everything that you and your folks do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum. All members are present.
Okay. Counsel, you've got the draft agenda. Are there any proposed modifications to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd request that we add an item to the consent portion of the agenda, resolution appointing designated agents for the city's HMGP grant. And the resolution is in front of you.
Okay. Wait a minute. Let me write this down. Okay. All right. So that will be a number five under consent. Okay.
And I have a change I'd like to make. Could we move the item that is M2 in New Business, South Broad Restriping, up to the first special presentation that we'll have? So we'll make that item I-1, and then the bear sculpture and roundabout landscaping betterments presentation will be I-2.
Could we make the bear first, since we have a visitor presenting the bear, and make the roundabout or the parking number two? Does that...
Sure. We can do that. Yep.
All right. So we will move the South Broad Restriping to Special Presentation 2. Okay. And take it off of New Business. Okay. All right. Any other changes? All right. Counsel.
I'd say there's no action tonight.
That's up to counsel.
Okay.
Well, when we get to it, I mean, there are different actions you can take.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the agenda with two modifications. Any other modifications? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The modified agenda is approved. Counsel, you've got the draft minutes of the October 6, 2025 Regular Meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. All right. We have no certificates or awards today, so we are going to move right on to public comments. All right. In public comments, the public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on this agenda. And the public hearing, we have four public hearings. So I'm just looking at the, I see...
That's a public hearing.
I think Mr. Lawrence Van... I think you signed the wrong sheet. So you're here for the public hearing, right? The annexation?
Yes.
All right. We're going to move you, we're going to move your name to...
What's that name again?
Lawrence Van Ankr... All right.
Eagle, sir. What was your last name, sir?
Stewart, Van, like a movie, Van, Ankr.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think everybody else is okay on... Yeah. Well, all right. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk, which is the signup sheet. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council, state your name and address clearly, limit comments to three minutes or less, and avoid repetition. When you have 30 seconds left, I will give you a warning. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. And groups are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson on their behalf. I will call you up in the order in which you signed the sheet. Our first speaker is Ashley Hart. Ms. Hart?
Hello, Mayor, city councilmen, and staff. My name is Ashley Hart. I'm here to address an issue with you again. At the No Kings Rally on Saturday, October 18, 2025, there was a male protester who chased down a woman down the street, and that woman was me. I've given you all pictures of the man who did it and supporting evidence of what I'm speaking about. The No Kings Rally was scheduled from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., so I went earlier than that to avoid the massive crowd. But to my luck, they came early. Within an hour, at 12:30, I was starting to see more and more, then it turned into Then there was a guy that you guys have the picture of, who was a complete nuisance to me the entire time I was there. I minded my own business and held a sign that said, "Christ is King," and got called every name under the sun and got body shamed, fat shamed, everything. So I left. And as I was rounding the corner of the courthouse, he chased my vehicle. Yes, he chased my vehicle. I thought he was going to try to get into my vehicle, so I hurried up and locked my door. And I cut back into the courthouse, because after he was done chasing me, I turned back into the courthouse, because he didn't think I was going to do that. Well, I did. And I reported him to the chairman of the Transylvania County Democrat Party. And he was kind enough to see me in distress, and he approached me. He asked me what was wrong, and I thank him for that. I do. Let's see here. The next day on Facebook, I discussed it with the Transylvania County Democrat Party. As you can see in the packet I give you, he did not deny that it happened, but he is saying that somebody else did, it was somebody else. I'm sorry, but I was berated by this man for an hour. I know what he looked like when he was chasing my vehicle. And some more complaints while I'm here. The NAACP does not control traffic. This is a huge problem. When there is a green light in town, they should not be approaching the green light and stopping people. The green light's for the people to go.
30 seconds, Ms. Hart.
Also, there was no police presence until 2:00 p.m., when there was over hundreds of people there. And rest in peace Charlie Kirk, and God bless Erica Kirk and the USA.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Rodney Lox.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Lox. I live at 187 South Rice Street. I was going to say, when are you going to take down the sign at the COVID, but I was told the sign is down. And I appreciate that. I also know the next step is you're going to notify people in the community as to when the COVID is going to be fixed. You can't just read the paper and say, oh, it's going to be April or May. The official information has to come from you. And I noticed that you're doing the storm water management program, their people out, and then you'll find out how many culverts that we actually have and the condition of all the culverts and what kind of problem we really have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lox. Our next speaker is Val Girdes.
Good evening, everybody, mayor and council members. My topic is about the striping plan on Broad Street. And my name is Valerie Girdes. I'm representing Brevard Pizza Works and Wood and Vine Restaurant located at 36 and 44 Broad Street, South Broad Street. I'd like to respectfully request consideration for relocating the current loading zone on South Broad Street to the East Jordan Block between Gaston and South Broad. This location experiences lower traffic. It does not block the entrance to any buildings, and it provides a safer unloading area for both truck drivers and our pedestrians. That's it. I appreciate your time, your consideration, and your ongoing efforts to make downtown Brevard safe and accessible to everyone. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, also, I did print out for visual reference, a little highlighted slide.
Give it to the clerk, please. Yeah, I do.
Okay. I'm good either.
All right. Our next speaker is Paul Wylander.
Hello. First, I got to start with an apology, because everybody told last week that the unloading zone was a good idea. I completely recant all that. I had taken that back to the brokers at my office, which is in front of 66 South Broad Street, to the retail shop next door, spoke to the adjoining property owner, Ann Hollingsworth, and the retail owner of the shop, Headlines. And they were all vehemently opposed to putting the unloading zone in front of that building space, primarily because we felt like there were some better options that were available to the city of Brevard. The main one, or I'll just go ahead and read what I had emailed to some of you guys. "I've been informed of new business to be proposed and voted on today in front of three shop spaces on South Broad Street. As the owner of one of the shops and buildings fronting this proposed future loading zone, I kindly ask that you consider other locations. It's been explained to me that the real problem is enforcement of loading zones. If we had enforcement of loading zones, then we wouldn't need to utilize prime parking spaces." I had three other locations picked out. One was the one that Val mentioned, behind Kiote's on Jordan Street, East Jordan Street, where the backside of the building, the elevation's much higher than the road. It wouldn't block any retail spaces, save for pedestrians. I don't think any citizen would complain about it, and just seems to make a lot of logistical sense. The second spot is just to put it right back where it previously was on West Jordan Street, which is on the adjoining side of my building, which is where it was before. And you're just trading two spaces for two spaces, but taking it off of Broad Street. And then the third was just to put it in front of First Citizens Bank. I realize that that's longer of a haul for these delivery truck drivers, but it's also not going to mess with any retail spaces or parking. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wylander. Our next speaker is Anne Degara.
My name is Anne Degara. My husband and I own Red Wolf Gallery, and we headed up the Brevard Sculpture Project. I'm here to tell the importance of the sculpture in the bear around, because the sculptures were not done as decorations. They were done for economic development. When you have, when you expand the arts in a community, all studies show that it attracts tourists, and it attracts the cultural tourist, which spend, they spend more money in an area than a regular tourist. We still need money. We have the money to pay the sculptor, but we now need money, funding to change the design from trees and plants to put the bear in on rocks. I've already been talking to people today. I just want you to give me a little longer to raise the rest of the money.
Thank you, Mr. Degara. All right. Our next speaker is Brooke McCall.
Good evening. I'm here, my business is on 78 South Broad Street, Headlines Salon. So I'm here about the loading zone that's proposed, and I pretty much agree with everything Paul said. He's all, got it all formal, but I just wanted to mention that I'm sure there's, you know, better locations instead of, you know, being right in the front of three businesses and just, you know, that I'm against that, and just hoping that the council can come up with a better solution for our businesses, you know, in town. We need, you know, we're short on parking. I've been in my business for 28 years, and, you know, my customers, you know, need all the parking that's possibly, you know, you know, as close to us as we can, because we're in a retirement village, and most of them can't, you know, walk long distances. So just, you know, I would appreciate if everyone could maybe come up with some, some kind of solution, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Our next speaker is Doug Powell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council and staff. We are just 256 days to our nation's 250th anniversary. And as I'm sure the mayor is aware, one significant thing that happened 250 years ago, last Monday, October 13th, was the establishment of the United States Navy. So happy belated birthday to the Navy and everyone who served in its, in this branch of the armed forces. It was also at this time when the Navy officially adopted the Appeal to Heaven flag to be flown on our first naval ships. You might also know this flag as the pine tree flag. Why is this important? Because as our national motto is, "In God we trust," it indicates our nation's founding, its laws, our protection, and success was right from the start deemed reliant on the God of the Bible and His providence. James Wilson, an original justice of the Supreme Court and one of only six founders to sign both the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, put it this way, "Human law must rest its authority ultimately upon the authority of that law which is divine." This is why the gross misunderstanding of the phrase "separation of church and state" is so troubling. For the record, you cannot find this phrase anywhere in the Declaration, the Constitution, or the Bill of Rights. It does not exist. Yes, it was President Thomas Jefferson who coined the phrase "a wall of separation between church and state," but it is important to note that Jefferson had absolutely nothing to do with the drafting of the Constitution or the First Amendment, where most Americans mistakenly believe this phrase can be found. These eight simple words have been wrongly extracted and manipulated from a letter Jefferson wrote to the Danbury Baptists of Connecticut on January 1, 1802. The Baptists had written to Jefferson earlier over concerns that some in government might mistake our freedom of religion, which can be found in the First Amendment, as a government granted right rather than a God-given right. In his letter, Jefferson assured them that civil government had no authority to alter or govern an American citizen's rights of conscience. In fact, for nearly 150 years, this letter in its entirety was used in only seven federal court cases. And in those rare mentions, it was actually to help clarify and strengthen...
30 seconds.
...a citizen's freedom of religion. And guess where President Jefferson attended church only two days after writing this infamous letter? The United States Capitol Building. Yes, that Sunday, he attended a service conducted by his friend and Baptist preacher, the Reverend John Leland. A federal building seems like a very odd place for the chief magistrate to worship God, especially when we are told that he was the person responsible for establishing a separation of church and state.
Time, Mr. Powell.
What other misconceptions have Americans unwittingly adopted? State them.
Thank you. Our last person who signed up is Harvey Sankey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. My name's Harvey Sankey, 51 Lake House Trail in Brevard, North Carolina. Tonight, I was going to speak in reference to the former eyesore by a developer behind the old courthouse on the left side of Broad Street just before Main. I prepared a three-minute, exactly three-minute comment on this. However, as I was driving by to come to this meeting, I see that it's being taken care of. This is the fastest the city council has acted to a comment that I have made.
So far.
However, however, if you can, in your remarks section, please inform us of the status of this development and what's going on concerning this development. Now, Mac, you can flip a coin here with Wilson to discuss this in your remarks section if you want to. I'd appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankey. All right. That is everybody that signed up for public comment. All right. So we are now going to move on to special presentations. And our first presentation is the bear sculpture and the roundabout landscaping and betterments presentation. And Mr. Paul Ray, our planning director, is going to begin it.
Good evening. As you'll remember, council previously approved the final design, keeping improvements that go along with NCDOT's roundabout project at Highway 280, Dever Road, and Highway 64 at 276. Most of those improvements are covered by the state's landscaping budget. Since then, a group of local artists led by Anne Degara has proposed installing a bear sculpture in the Pisgah Forest Roundabout. The artist group has already raised about $20,000 donations, and the sculpture would likely be created by Charles Calvin. In August, council authorized staff to engage McAdams for an estimate on updating the roundabout landscaping plan to include the sculpture and help coordinate with NCDOT for their review and approval. That work includes identifying a location for the sculpture, adjusting the landscaping and lighting plan, creating a rendering for NCDOT, designing a foundation pad with IONCON engineering, and preparing a safety analysis for NCDOT. The work should take about 10 days once a notice to proceed is issued. But before NCDOT can review the design, they first need a formal resolution from city council requesting authorization for public art in the right of way. The estimated cost for McAdams' engineering work is about $19,660 to be funded by the city unless community fundraising continues over the next couple of weeks. According to the Finance Department, the roundabout fund is currently showing a deficit of about $29,000. Resolution before you authorizes the city manager to sign a contract with McAdams. Staff does not need a decision on this tonight and can bring this back to you at your next scheduled meeting with an updated financial information. And with that, I'll turn this over to Teresa Buckwalter with McAdams, who will share more about the design revisions and the next steps.
Thanks, Paul. Can we have a little bit more than 10 days? Please. It's okay. I mean, we can, we can do it as needed, but it's not, I don't want to mean... Madam Mayor and council, thank you very much for having me back. And I'm just going to pull up this presentation here just to share with you all, kind of what, what goes into all that. As Paul mentioned, it's coming. As Paul mentioned, this is an NCDOT STIP project called R5799, and that is currently underway. And we'll just touch on a little bit of background and timeline on that, the request for the bear and the, and the roundabout at the Pisgah Forest Highway, and then kind of what's involved in the NCDOT art in the right-of-way process. Maybe I'll make this full screen quick, if I can, or I'll just close out of this. Okay. That's what's happening. It shouldn't take long. I just want to share with you all first the timeline that Paul mentioned. Sort of back, DOT projects take some time. And back in 2019, city council voted to approve a city sign that we worked on with you all when I was with a different firm, but, and it's a gateway as well as the city of Brevard sign right there at the Pisgah National Forest intersection that Paul mentioned. And that's really to show people that you are in, in the city of Brevard. And then in 2020, we did a presentation of that gateway and arch that we're recommending, which kind of has a nod to the historic arch over the roadway, but this would be over a multi-use path. We did that presentation to the TDA. And then in 2021, the landscape betterments, this is all of this sort of planting plan that would really enhance, enhance what DOT's work is going to, is going to involve. So that was... work is going to, is going to involve. So that was, those plans were finalized in 2021. And then in 2023, DOT finally led the project. And so that is giving that to a contractor. And that construction began in 2024 and is slated, I believe, for three years. And the two roundabouts are the Phase Four of that project. And so those are, I anticipate, happening in 2026. And the approved plans, we worked with, so I worked with the engineer that these, that DOT hired. And so I would get their plans and we would overlay the landscape betterments on those plans. And I'm going to come back a little bit to that very first slide that I shared. We did a rendering, kind of a bird's eye rendering. And the idea with these, there are actually two roundabouts, one at the, what, Pisgah or Forest Gate Shopping Center. And then the next one, very quickly, you'll see kind of coming up to the forest, the National Forest Highway. So basically, the idea is that we would theme these roundabouts. And so this theme had the National Forest as its theme. And so we kind of, we worked with DOT. We're showing trees in this one to represent the forest. Generally speaking, very kind of tall, columnar trees. And they're centered very much in that center of that roundabout, in part because we want to make sure, and DOT wants us to make sure, that nothing is going to block the sightlines of a driver. And so DOT actually, and FHWA, which kind of manages the rules and regulations for our Department of Transportation, they actually recommend trees in a roundabout, in part because drivers who aren't used to the roundabout, you know, something different was there, that signals a driver coming up from a ways away, they can actually see the trees and think, okay, there's something different here than I'm used to. And so that actually is helpful. So long as they are not blocking, once a driver comes up to the roundabout, they're not blocking their view. So that's why they're kind of centered in that focus, or focused in that center of that roundabout. And then we added some additional elements here. So we've got lower landscaping, that's a lot of different types of flowers and plants. And then we've got some, what we are calling kind of stonework, that's really flat on the ground plane, like a flagstone. And that flagstone, you can kind of see in the foreground, that really is going to lead, potentially lead a driver's eye to that center, right? And so it's, we use kind of larger flagstones on the outer edge and make them smaller as you're coming in, kind of almost to mimic a forest path, right? And then we also have these timber fence sections that really kind of play off the look and feel of the Pisgah Forest, the Cradle of Forestry signage. And so this is all sort of a nod to the Cradle of Forestry. And then you can also see in the background, not in the center of the roundabout, the proposed City of Brevard sign and the archway that I mentioned, that would be over the multi-use side path that Department of Transportation will build as part of this project. So I'm going to jump back to, so these were, this is just a CAD drawing, a line drawing. So DOT has approved these, City has approved these. And then, now we're kind of looking at the idea of the bear. And I loved, I didn't get a chance to see Ann present this about a month ago, but I did get to watch it on the recording. And that was really fun to see kind of almost life-size bear, right? And so this is her sketch, and City staff shared that with me so that we've got a sense of how tall this is being proposed and how wide it is, that kind of thing. And so we took that and we developed a very quick CAD model because Department of Transportation is going to require a CAD model of this. So they, what they'll want to see is a 30, what they call a 30% drawing. And so that 30% drawing is essentially, what are the materials, what are the dimensions? And then we need to show, like, where is this thing going to go, right? And so, and then two things will have to happen. In addition to the resolution from the city, the Department of Transportation will need to see analysis, and then they'll need to see a change order of that landscape betterment plan. So those are the, the main things that we need to do here. So we did a really quick model, and this is by no means, this is just the, taking the dimensions and showing that in relation, the scale of this roundabout. So this roundabout is pretty big. It's over 100 feet in width. And then those timber fence sections that you see there in, right behind the bear, those are about eight feet wide and about four feet tall. And so this is, this is just a scale of model of the dimensions that, that were provided for us, just to show you all, this is kind of the scale of the bear. This is definitely not the final rendering, but we'll need to take that bear into more of a CAD drawing and a rendering to show the exact location. So we can move things around, we can do a change, change on the landscape plans, we can do a change on the lighting, which would really kind of gently, I would say, uplight that bear. So we don't want anything glaring in anyone's eyes, but if, if you all do decide to go with the, the sculpture, we want to make sure we can uplight that. And so the, one of the first things DOT will ask us is, we need to see, to make sure that this is not going to be in the eyes of a driver. So they look at several different types of sight distance. The first is the stopping sight distance, where drivers, if they have to stop, they're not supposed to stop in the roundabout, but if they have to. The intersection sight distance, a decision-making sight distance of a driver, and the view angle. So it's several different analyses and exhibits that they'll ask us for. And then they'll also want to see, you know, basically, we're looking at the guidelines and talking about, it's a fixed object, right? So Department of Transportation tends to really like breakaway. So you'll see those signs on the side of the roadway, on a metal pole, there's a very often breakaway. So if a car go, if a car for some reason goes off the road and hits a sign like that, it's not going to kill the driver, it's going to run the sign over. So when we're talking about a sculpture, we're talking about more of a fixed object, right? And so we want to make sure that it is, you know, outside of a zone for if somebody does end up going off the road into the center of the roundabout, they're not going, there's enough space that they're not going to hit that and, and hurt themselves. And so we will have to develop a base for this. And this is literally just a clip art of a bear on a boulder, just for fun. And in fact, our structural engineer that we always work with, who's really helped with the sign, and that's IonCon, we talked a little bit about this. She in fact knows the artist that Ann has talked to, and they used to work together. And so it's, it's a really easy coordination for us if we need to. So, but we will need to coordinate that and make sure that the base is something that DOT can approve. They usually require a structural engineer. So, and then we just, we need to be looking into and doing further analysis about that base, whether or not it can be a boulder or if it has to be something else. So we can get into that. And then with the landscape plan, we'll need to do a change order. I talked with the division engineer. We were hoping it was just like, maybe we could just take this out or this out. I'm sorry, it's been approved, you need to change order. So that kind of adds a little bit more of a level of our analysis and coordination. But it certainly can be done. And as I mentioned, the lighting plan, we do have a lighting plan for this that really sort of gently uplights the trees and different parts of those fences and some boulders. And we do have boulders planned for the center of this roundabout. So there are these fixed objects already. So we'll have to do an adjustment of that lighting plan. And we can do that, and it can be, it can be fun, it can be different colors if you all want it to be. So, but the process is this, is that this kind of outlines it with these icons. It's a little small, but essentially, it's, number one is to conduct that sight distance evaluation, and then coordinate that with the artist and with DOT to make sure that DOT gets enough of a design that they can evaluate that. We'll do the change order to, or the change to the construction documents, being those plantings, and provide the uplighting, and make sure you all see what we're recommending, the location. And then resubmit those landscape betterment plans to the division, and then submit an encroachment agreement, and work with that Art in the Right of Way Committee. So that committee will be formed based on a request and the resolution from the city if you all choose to do this. And so then that Art Committee can be formed and, and we can coordinate with them. In addition, this is very good timing, in a way, because we're also wanting to, we could do this process concurrent with the other right-in-the-way processes for the sign, the archway, and for the digester that you all had seen a presentation on, and for the Acusta Road Roundabout. And so we can take those to the next level, get those approvals, and/or hopefully, I mean, they're not guaranteed. I think one of the things that FHWA, one of the guidelines they put out is, what they don't want is people running into the road, going into that center of that roundabout, and taking a selfie or something. So they don't recommend any benches, they don't recommend any plaques in the center, nothing that's going to really attract people, right? And so we really try to keep these very visual, but very much from the perspective of a car and driver and not somebody walking up to it. So this could all happen around the same time, that would help. And then, this is a wonderful opportunity. I'm so glad that it was brought to you all because this is an opportunity for those future roundabouts, which you all know about, as part of a different DOT project, that's R5800. And we've done the landscape betterment plans for that. Those are not, that one hasn't been completely finalized by the DOT's engineer. So as we're finalizing those plans, we could, we definitely set aside space for additional sculptures in the center of those roundabouts. And so there are three additional roundabouts for that project that you all can begin to think about, because we got a little more time with that. So I think it's a really interesting opportunity. And again, kind of speaking to Ms. Degara's point is, this, this does definitely attract folks to want to come and check these out. So it could really add to the character. Any questions as we-
Thank you, Teresa. So we're going to open this up for questions and discussion by council. And Paul, just let me verify, we do not need a vote or a decision from council tonight. The decision will be in two weeks when we get another report from Ann on the funding efforts to try and fund this with community donations. Okay. But we will open this, we've got Teresa here for any questions. And we'll start with Mr. Baker.
Great, thanks, Teresa. It's been a long time coming, longtime project. I think I was on the, the TDA when this first came up, years and years and years ago. So happy to see it continuing on. I don't have too many questions. One, one question I do have, and I think I actually brought this up the last time we discussed this, was just how the final design, how different the final design might be from the one we've already approved in terms of, I know we're adding the bear, but do you think that we will just lose a few of the trees in order to incorporate the bear? Is that sort of the, the gist of what we're thinking right now?
It might be helpful to go back to that cross, the elevation.
Yeah.
So you can see the elevation does show, you know, the very low landscaping. I don't think, I don't anticipate we'd have to change any of that. The fencing, it's got shrubs in the center and these tall trees. So I think that we can accomplish what we need to accomplish to really make that bear stand out by removing select mature trees that we're proposing. These are all-
But still incorporating some trees?
Yeah. Yep. I mean, we could, the one that you see here, we have, I think it's a Kindred Spirit Oak, which is very columnar. And then we have these different fir trees and spruce trees that are kind of like a weeping white spruce. So I think we can accomplish really highlighting and showing the bear through lighting and through select removal of trees.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, when we're talking about aesthetics like this, everybody has differences of opinion. But I would just love to see the, the bear and the trees sort of live, you know, I guess, in harmony in the roundabout. Because I like the, you know, the trees as mirroring the forest, I think was a great, a great idea. So wouldn't want to lose too much of that when we're incorporating that, the sculpture, which I think is also a great idea. And with the digester, I'm happy that you gave an update. I was going to ask about that if, if you hadn't mentioned it. So looking forward to it.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, I agree with Erin, the, the trees and the bear together, bear in a natural setting. I think that's going to be striking, and I look forward to seeing it. Yeah.
Mr. Teresa, no, I've been a bear fan from way back. And I think it's also nice, Ann, that most people in this room don't realize it was also Goffey that did all those nice silhouettes that are on top of our mastar poles. So it's-
The sculptors.
All the sculptures and the-
How we golfed.
Exactly. Yeah, same guy. So, you know, that's wonderful.
And he was a fabricator for NASCAR.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And if you've, if you've never been to his shop, you need to put it on your list.
Ms. Holder?
I don't really have any questions, but I do want to say thank you, and thank you, Ann. Since you were here the last time, there was actually a bear in my neighborhood, one house over. And I got pictures from my neighbor, this huge bear. So this would be the only bear that I'm not afraid of. And hope that he will attract the other ones that visit my neighborhood to go to the forest. But I spoke with mayor, I think before I was on council, about all of the roundabouts and getting dizzy with the roundabouts. But I'm excited about the fact that we have themes to choose from. And so with that said, thank you so much for what you're doing. Thank you, Ann.
Mr. Wise?
I really can't add anything significant as usual, but I do appreciate the effort you have made to bring art into our community, a continuing effort. I do think it's impactful and important. And yeah, I would love to talk about some funding sources next time. Oh, yeah, money.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I just, and this is sort of humorous, but I hope the, I hope the newspaper who's in the room will, will print a copy of the, the image that you showed, even though it's just for scale, because the original image that was included on the front paper, which made it sound, seem, look like we were building a sort of, you know, giant Statue of Liberty-sized bear in the middle of the roundabout was, caused some conversations, I'll say. So it's nice to see an accurate depiction of the scale of the bear.
I did advocate people being able to get inside the bear and look out the bear eyes. I guess that's not-
That's, that's one vote.
Okay, council, let's get back on topic. All right. Ms. Holder, you have another question?
I do have a question to Erin's point about the, the size with the trees. Putting the bear on a boulder, would that also help to highlight the bear?
Yes.
Okay. Is that what you're planning to do?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the plan.
Okay.
You just have to make sure that that can be approved by the-
From DOT, okay. All right, thank you.
Also, even though this doesn't totally show it, there is, it's domed just a little bit. The proposed grade is to dome this, to make the trees happy, and I think that will also help the bear.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from council? Thank you, Teresa. And just for the public, if anybody wants to help donate money to help fund this, Ann Degara is the person who is-
It's a community-focused foundation.
And just note that it's for the bear. And she is heading our effort to get community donations to pay for the $19,000 that we need for the engineering and change orders. So thank you very much. All right. We will move on to our next special presentation. All right. This is the South Broad Street striping plan. And this is going to be, I believe, city manager.
Yes, ma'am. I'll ask David to come up, because I'm going to throw it to him in a minute. David, will you bring up the image that went out with the packet?
And I will let you know that there have been numerous handouts that have collected at my end of the table. And I'm going to get to the clerk pass out to everybody.
Thank you, Mac.
There's this one and those.
So mayor and city council, this item has come to you on an unusual path, and it's before you rather than a committee, because it's time-sensitive, number one, but for other reasons you'll see in a minute. As way of background, in preparation for NCDOT's Broad Street repaving project, the city needed to submit a striping plan to the state so that, once the new pavement was down, they would know where we wanted the parking and other stripes to go. It would, the new pavement, as I said, is a literal blank slate. And so they just wanted us to commit to something on paper so that they know they were painting the lines back in a way that was acceptable to us. And typically, this is a boring administrative act that folks like me do just on our own, without much input from you. But because downtown parking and traffic is such a sensitive matter, and because the repaving gave us an opportunity to perhaps reconfigure our parking and claw some spaces back, I brought this item to the Downtown Master Plan Committee for some guidance. So in May, the Downtown Master Plan Committee met, had a good discussion about this. Their discussion incorporated feedback from the businesses. And ultimately, at that time, the committee took a unanimous- the committee took a unanimous vote to approve the restriping plan that's depicted here. This highlight, the highlights of this plan were to relocate, I don't want to say current anymore because it's been repaved and so it's not configured like this anymore, but the most recent configuration had the handicap parking space in front of Quixote's sort of parked in the middle of the loading zone area. And so, that handicap parking space bifurcated the loading zone and made it less usable. So, the plan that was proposed to the committee that they approved saw us moving the handicap parking space to the end of the row of existing contiguous parking slots and make one large continuous loading zone at the end of the block in front of Quixote. Now, that zone, as recommended by the committee at the time, would have been 69 feet, which was smaller than the loading zone before, but still large enough to accommodate what David and I call a US Foods truck, which is essentially a, a small, single-axle transfer truck. And without that handicap space in the middle, a 69-foot space, although smaller than before, would have been large enough to accommodate such a truck. This scheme would have let us claw back one additional space on that block. All right? The second component of the Downtown Master Plan Committee's recommendation at the time was on the 100 block of Broad Street in front of Looking Glass Realty and the Hair Salon to leave that spot, not blank, but to paint the parking spots back in temporary space, temporary paint, so that during the parking study, our studying firm could tell us whether parking or loading was more needed in that block. And so, for now, we would have replaced those spots back like-for-like with an ADA spot at the end and taken a long look at that block to see in the future whether we need to replace those parking spaces with a loading zone. And so, that was the committee's recommendation at the time. Since that time, and that was several months ago, and so, since that time, the repaving's been conducted. We've had another summer worth of commerce downtown where we've been able to observe the habits of our parkers, the habits of our loading trucks. And I think that the observations have caused a couple of the Downtown Master Plan Committees to reconsider their recommendation. And so, for that reason, at the request of the committee chair, I've brought this back to the council. And I'm asking you whether you'd be willing to entertain some additional alternatives to the committee recommendation from May or some other direction from you all. And so, I'll throw it over to David here to go over the alternatives that we've discussed with the committee chair and some of the other committee members since then.
Thank you. Good evening, council, mayor. I'm going to start back at the, in front of Quixote's, and this is a little different orientation than the previous slides that we were looking at. See if I can actually make this full screen. This is, this is good enough. Thank you. Here. Thank you. What this particular configuration shows is a continued reduction of the loading spot space to 47 feet instead of 67 feet and brings in one more parking space. So, this would be a net gain of two parking spaces. So, if I just quickly walk down the layout, there is a 30-foot bump out at the end, there's a three-foot space that's required to pull around the bump out, and then a new ADA space and ramp, and then 22-foot parking spaces running the length of the, the street with a 47-foot loading zone. Now, some of the parking spaces out there now are actually a variety of lengths. They vary from 18 feet to 24 feet. So, this does bring some uniformity to the parking spaces. This will accommodate one box truck or potentially two box trucks if they pull in, if the first person pulls all the way up to the front, it would accommodate two box trucks or like a UPS truck or the slightly larger, there's some uniform trucks, et cetera, that are slightly larger than that. The next proposal moves over to in front of Looking Glass. So, let me go back to the original plan here just a second. What is currently in front of Looking Glass Realty is there is a accessible space right at the corner of Jordan Street and Broad. It's kind of hard to see my mouse moving there. And then, there are three parking spaces between there and the entrance drive to the bank. What we are proposing now, one of these proposals, is to change that entire area to a loading zone. It becomes an 82-foot loading zone. This would easily accommodate the US Foods truck or potentially a couple of box trucks. The, the US Foods truck is primarily the largest truck you see right around the downtown area. The truck itself is about 50 feet in length, and then it has a 14-foot loading platform that pulls out of the back of it. So, the total length of the truck is about 64 feet plus a little working room. So, another four or five feet working room on the tail end of it. So, you know, you need 70 feet roughly to fit the truck. So, this is comfortable for the US Foods truck. What this proposal would do is move the ADA space to the other side of the street. It will require a loading ramp. One of the things that I've not fully vetted here is there are currently two parking spaces here. We believe we can fit the ADA space and one parking space here, but it may be necessary to take both of these spaces to fit the ADA space. I do believe that it will fit both right now. The next scheme that we looked at reduced the size of this loading area to 60 feet and leaves one parking space intact. And again, moves the ADA space across the street. The problem with this is it's really not big enough for the US Foods truck. He needs 64 feet plus some loading area. So, if the US Foods truck were to pull in here now, he would be unloading in Jordan Street, basically, kind of in the middle of the intersection. So, this one really feels a little, it's probably too tight, but we wanted to show that we had looked at that option. The next option creates a 55-foot loading zone and moves the handicap space or the ADA space down to the end of the loading zones. This kind of takes full advantage of this loading space that's here now with a five-foot ramp. So, what you see again is that it's, it's very tight for the US Food truck. Now, I do want to make a clarification. There are, and again, I'm just using US Foods for example, they use multiple-sized trucks. So, their longest truck that they bring into town is the 64-foot. They do have a smaller truck that I believe is about 10 feet shorter than that. So, that truck might fit here. So, I'm, I'm using some pretty generic terms when I say that, but the drivers never know what size truck they're going to get, and they can't designate that they need the smaller truck size for Brevard. So, I think we do need to plan on it, a minimum of the 64 to 67 feet to have working room for the US Foods truck. So, again, I believe this scenario would be difficult, or the times a truck is there unloading, the ramp would be out and again into Jordan Street. But this does leave the ADA space on that side of the street. And then, the last proposal we're kind of putting together from, you know, listening to all the different food, feedback that we received. This would again make the entire area in front of Looking Glass Realty, if I said outfitters, I'm sorry, I'm showing my, my past, my rock climbing past. This would turn the, in front of, the entire front of that block into the loading zone and would move the ADA or handicap space onto the, the first space on Jordan Street right as you round the corner. And then, it would use the pedestrian crosswalk as its access onto the sidewalk. One thing this does, there are not, there are not laws, statutes in place that dictate street parking for accessible parking spaces. There are some guidelines. And those guidelines in general, for the number of parking spaces we typically have on a block, would generally recommend that you have one space, one ADA space per block. Now, that's not clearly defined, and if I showed you the ADA guidelines, they're, they'll make your head swim a little bit trying to determine exactly where spaces need to be. But this space, moving this ADA space onto Jordan Street, it is flatter and it is closer to, it is more central to shopping and is less of a move from where it is now, even to the other end of the loading zone. So, those are the proposals we put together. I'm sure there are others, folks might come up with, with as well, but I wanted to share Mr. Hooper, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
That's our presentation of the original proposal and the alternatives that we've come up with for this matter, mayor and council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager, council. Our staff is asking for a motion and a decision tonight. You have various options in front of you. You can endorse one of the various options that were presented. You could table, you can send it back to the committee. You have various options to consider. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt diagram number three.
Do I have a second? All right, no second. That motion fails. Do I have another motion?
Should we send it back to the committee?
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to send it back to the committee. I'll open it for discussion. Mr. Moore?
I think, I heard a suggestion from Val, I think her name is. Thank you for that. I know she's left. But maybe there's still some other options to consider.
Ms. Holder?
I wanted to hear from the business owners, and I'm glad you guys are here tonight, Paul and Val. I would like to see the committee revisit this. And I have several questions that if we take this back to the committee, it would be a good time to ask those questions and get them answered. So, that's where I stand with it.
Mr. Wise?
Yeah, thanks for all you guys coming to speak to us. I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure who they go to, so I'm going to look at you, David. I understand time is of the essence because they are starting restriping soon. Is that true-ish?
Yes, sir, it is. I regretfully do not have an exact schedule, but they had intended to have the striping done by now. So, we believe we've been able to hold them off. It's, we're going to do our best to ask them to, to hold off. The contractor working for DOT does face liquidated damages if the work is not completed by a certain schedule, so he's anxious to get done as well. So, I believe that, that time is of the essence to make a decision.
Do you have any idea how long this striping takes? And can we tell DOT to not do that section until, until the end?
We can definitely ask them to not do that. I'm, I'm honestly not sure how long that striping will take. I would imagine that this is fairly quick. I would think a couple of days. I'm going to look to Wesley. Is that, would you think that's a couple of days of striping?
And I also understand that the kind of paint they use is more valuable than gold bullion, and that if we did want to wait, if we wanted to re-stripe that ourselves, do we have any idea the cost of doing that?
No, sir, I don't. I could figure that out. It is, it's more costly than regular paint. I don't think it would be exorbitant. It will, it would not be cheap. But, you know, it's thermoplastic paint is what they use. It's kind of baked into the asphalt in a sense versus just painted on top. So, we, we would have the option to paint it with regular traffic paint ourself or thermoplastic paint, either one. But I'm regretful, I'd be hesitant to guess at a cost.
Sure, I get that. I also, I also know that there was a, a motion in May from this committee. I agree that the, the time is of an essence. I think there's enough to look at, and especially hearing from business owners, that I do think it should go back to committee. That's what those committees are for. That's all I've got.
Ms. Holder, did you have another comment?
I do. I apologize. He got my ring going to back to. I understand that one of the problems too is enforcing loading zones where we have now. Have we tried to do that, to see if that works? And will these new parking spaces, how, how do we manage that? And the parking spaces that we, or the, the loading zones that we have now, how are we managing those?
Councilmember, I take issue with the claim that we're not enforcing our downtown parking. The trucks arrive all through the day and sometimes into the night, and so, we'd have to park a police officer there all day long to enforce it adequately. I personally witnessed not only our downtown parking enforcer, Andrea, but some of our other men and women in blue move trucks along that are parked illegally on Jordan Street. They're just too frequent to be able to move all of them along. And so, I think that enforcement is a part, and I think that our folks are doing it adequately, and that in order to get folks to park where we want them to, we need to create a physical environment that makes adequate enough infrastructure for both parkers and trucks that are loading and unloading. And so, I will oversee and make sure that our enforcement can improve where it can improve and not only issues tickets to the folks that violate our parking ordinance, but regularly moves the trucks that park illegally on Jordan Street and other places along. But I just don't think it's realistic to expect them to be able to catch every offender. We need to create an environment where folks have a place to park so they won't offend.
So, my question on the other side of that is, if I decide to park in a loading zone, you know, what happens? If a person who is not supposed to be parked in the loading zone and a truck comes to that place to unload, the space is not available. So, how, how do we manage that?
A normal driver who parks in a loading zone, if their car has observed parking there beyond a reasonable time, you know, our folks are flexible, they're not going to issue a ticket the first time they see you. But if she stands there on the block and notices that your car's parked there for 10 minutes or more, she's going to issue you a ticket right away. There's no two-hour grace period, there's no two-hour period where a car parked in a loading zone, except the designated car loading zones, which we have a few of around town. But the large loading zones meant for trucks. There's no, there's no situation where a car parked there would be parked legally.
Okay. That was part of the feedback that I got, that's why I asked. And the last thing is, will the loading zones exclude certain hours? For example, if people, I understand they come out during the night, but will those parking spaces be available on the weekend to get some parking spacing, parking back?
No, ma'am, that's not the intention.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you, David.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, well, I am the chair of the Downtown Master Plan Committee, and I'm the person who has been partially responsible for initiating this. The, talking to, and I've spoken to every member of the Downtown Master Plan Committee, and I think there's a, either there was a subtext that was missed or after observing how this has proceeded over the summer, most people realize that what we, what we have now... we, what we have now is not working. The intention and what was presented by the planning department to that committee was that we would eliminate a loading zone on Jordan Street. We would put a box truck parking, loading in front of Coyotes and a tractor-trailer in front of looking glass. Is that correct? That is correct. The, uh, Hardebrivard, uh, expressed that they didn't care for that, and, uh, we listened to them. And my recollection and the recollection of everyone I've spoken to, except for a couple of people, city manager being one of those, is that, um, we decided to take a temporary action, uh, to wait until the parking study was done, to see what their recommendations were for what we would put in front of looking glass. And we would temporarily put parking in front of, we'll go ahead and mark parking, in front of Coyotes. Um, so the, the whole issue arose when I was on vacation. Paul called me, said, uh, you know, "They're striping, and if we're, do we wanna rethink this?" And so that's when I called folks. And, you know, the whole intent of this is, uh, isn't, that we not miss the opportunity that DOT put the striping down in the thermoplastic. The intention from the presentation that we were given at that time was that, um, we were eliminating the loading zone on Jordan Street, but we were gonna move it. Not that we were just eliminating the loading zone in its entirety. We were simply replacing it somewhere else because of the problems that we have with the trucks on Jordan Street, even with a marked loading zone. So, um, you know, some of the discussion about putting, um, transfer trucks on Jordan Street, whether it's east or, uh, west Jordan Street, are the same problems. We're just moving the problem from one side of the street to the other. So, um, the other issue is the timing. Uh, if we send this back to committee, um, this is sort of pointless to do that, uh, because the painting, the lines will be painted by the time that committee meets. Um, and, um, as, as I understand it, and I've, I've asked a couple of people about that. The, um, so, I mean, I, I guess what I'm, would like to say that is, we're trying to be, the intent was to try to be efficient and try to do, uh, use the resources that the state has to offer. And this is not something I'm gonna die, hill that I wanna die on, you know? It's, if the, if the decision is not to do that, then it's not, it's not an earth-shattering decision. It's not like we're not, you know, fix the waste treatment plant, you know? That's, that's serious. You know? Um, the, but, um, I, I, I feel like that the ci, the, uh, Downtown Master Plan did not make a decision, and I think we're now paying for that. And I feel like if we don't make a decision now, that we're just pushing it down the road again, further. So, um, I, I feel like it should be, uh, a decision made. And I think it, you know, I had a friend of mine was here, who's a retired Florida DOT person, and I took her down there and looked at it, and she was like, "Yeah, that's the only thing that makes sense." Uh, let's put the tractor-trailer in front of this, you know, looking glass and put the box trucks over on the other side. When we were out there the other day, on last Thursday, um, there were two box trucks parked in front of Coyotes while we were there. And then we came back later, I came back later, an hour or so later, and there were two more box trucks parked there. So having two box truck parking spaces there, I think, is demonstrably, um, what would be, work. And I just feel like, um, I mean, I understand the concern about the committee, uh, and I've tried to get to, we've had two other members besides myself, uh, send emails to all, I sent those emails to all the council members in favor of this motion, um, that I made just now. And, um, so, uh, it's like I said, it's not, it's not something I'm gonna die on, you know? This isn't the defining moment for me, but, uh, I think it is, uh, we're just passing the buck. So, thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah. Um, for everybody that's listening out there, if it's, if it feels like we're way down deep in the weeds, um, it's, it's 'cause we are. But, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna twist that to a positive, which is to say that our committee structure, our normal committee structure, works really, really well, in that we, we get into the weeds like this at the committee level. We hear from stakeholders, you know, business owners or, you know, people downtown concerned, Hardebrivard, uh, concerned citizens at the committee level. And then when it, once it gets to us, we can be, you know, talking about bear statues and, and fun things like that. And, and we have a professional, uh, opinion from the committee that we trust, that we empower to do that work, uh, that we can rely on. So we've, that's why we're in this little bit of a situation, 'cause we haven't had that opportunity. Um, and I'm gonna mention what I think should happen, you know, personally, in my opinion, at this point now. But I also wanna talk about the fact that this is time-sensitive and that we seem to, as a city, and I'm gonna direct this to staff, not, we, we seem to be walking on eggshells a little bit about the DOT's and the DOT contractors' plans. Um, and I understand, you know, we all understand the DOT can be tricky to work with, and contractors don't always communicate with us the best. But, you know, we're, clearly, people care about this issue, and we, there's a one, there's one part of this equation that we don't have, which is like, "Well, we don't know when they're gonna do it, and, um, it could be tomorrow, it could be..." And I just, I cannot accept that as a, as a councilperson, as a, as a citizen of Rivard, that like, I understand this is a state DOT road, but we're talking about our downtown and the parking and the loading zones. We should be able to get a clear answer from them on when they are gonna do this, and if we need to ask them to wait a week, if it's not gonna put their contract in danger or, or whatever that may be with DOT, we should be able to ask them to do that. And at a certain point, I feel like we need to stand up for ourselves a little bit more, uh, as a city, and say, "We understand, DOT. You've got, you know, lots of stuff going on, but this is an important issue to us." Um, and so I hope that we can do that, particularly when it's time-sensitive like this. And clearly, there are people, uh, with differing opinions, and we need to find some consensus here. Um, the other thing that I didn't see here in the presentation was, you know, when we're, when we're problem-solving, I like to start from the top and, and understand what problem we're trying to solve. I know we need loading zones, but I haven't really heard clearly, do we know the total amount of loading zones that we need and the feet that we need to accommodate downtown?
No, sir. And as a matter of fact, that's a question that the committee addressed in their discussions. They said that they wanted the parking study to address that, and that before they made a final decision, they wanted to hear the results of the parking study.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I, and clearly, we, I mean, the, the parking study's not gonna be wrapped up for a year, so, you know, I don't think we can wait on that. So that's another issue that we're having, is that we just don't have a clear problem, you know? We gotta start from the tr, problem we're trying to solve, but we're gonna try to do our best here. So it, so one question I have is, so that, the, what we're looking at on the screen right now, that 69 feet of loading zone on South Broad, is that enough to accommodate the U.S. Foods truck that we think is sort of the largest thing we need to accommodate?
Yes, sir. I believe it will. The, the largest truck they send out is the 50-foot truck with a 14-foot ramp, and that allows a little bit of working space. Plus, there's a pedestrian crosswalk there, too, that would add a little more buffer. So I, I do believe that it is adequate. If, if I may, uh, speak to your question or comment about NCDOT.
Yeah.
I have personally emailed and called multiple times. Um, I do believe they have accommodated us because the painting should've occurred by now. So I think we, we are working together with them, but they're, you know, we, we don't hold the, the contract, so we lose some of our leverage when we don't hold that contract. But so far, I believe NCDOT has been cooperative, and we, I, I've, I've been making efforts to, to make those connections, but I've just not gotten a confirmation yet.
Indeed. And, and they've also accommodated our schedule for festivals in September, and they've been improving with regard to, uh, sending us notices when they're doing work here and there. And so we have stood up for ourselves with them. We had them arranged and scheduled to paint the lines that the committee originally approved. And it's only as this late change has come in that, uh, we've had a hard time getting in touch with them and knowing whether they delay the installation of the paint, uh, to accommodate the changes.
Right. And I, and I understand all that, and I appreciate that, that, that you guys are working hard. But I still feel like when we ask, like, should we not know when they're gonna paint by now?
As David said, they have delayed the painting, as they've heard about.
I know it's delayed, but shouldn't we know? Like, when I ask that question, the answer is just kinda like, "Well, I don't know."
Well, when we ask them to delay, they send their contractors over to other projects. And those contractors often get tied up with the vicissitudes of those other projects and weather delays and so forth. So when you ask to wait, you get shuffled to the bottom of the list.
Right. I, I guess I'm just, I'm still frustrated that we can't get a definitive answer, because we're being asked to make decisions based on a completely unknown timeline. So if I know we have two or three more weeks, well, then my, my direction or my ideas tonight might be completely different. If they're gonna paint tomorrow, then I'm gonna have a different decision, you know? And so not with, without knowing that timeline, it makes it really difficult to decide the best course of action. Um, you know? And I understand we don't have that answer right now, so we're gonna just have to move on from that. But, um, knowing that it's time-sensitive and that we would all prefer, I think, you know, to have the permanent paint in place, so that we don't have to, you know, go around and round anymore. Um, I did ask Wilson, you know, if we could have the committee form, or have a special meeting this week, call a special meeting, which they can do with 48 hours' notice. Now, convening that, you know, might get tricky with people's schedules and things like that. But if, if the committee could do that and make a recommendation at that time, you know, again, we're, we're in the weeds here. I would be willing to, you know, take the committee's recommendation, uh, straight from, from that level, uh, and say, "Well, that's what, that's what we're gonna go with." Because then, you know, the, there would be 48 hours of notice, the committee would meet, uh, it would be published, the business owners could, could state their, um, objections or, or ideas, and, and maybe staff would have a little bit more time to, to flesh out some alternative ideas, or, or say why those alternative ideas are not possible. Um, because I, I would like to hear, you know, in terms of Jordan Street, um, if, if that is just not an option, I'd, I'd like to hear directly from, or I'd like the committee to hear why that's not an option.
So, council member and council, um, there's an important nuance to Councilman Baker's, um, proposed motion that I'd ask the original motion maker to consider. And that is that not only would we be sending it back to committee, but we'd be empowering them to make the final decision. So under his proposal, it wouldn't make a return trip to council. And so I ask either the original motion maker to amend her motion.
No, sir.
I believe it was Mr. Morrow.
Okay. Sorry. Apologies.
I agree with a special meeting only. And then we could have a special meeting following that. Just keeping in the consistency of how, uh, and we would know maybe more about it at that point. But it seems to me we could have a lunch meeting right after that, or 48 hours after that. We could have a special meeting. I'm not sure we wanna empower that, you know, even being, you know, but I think it's important to keep those decisions in city council.
All right. So the motion that we have, the motion that we have on the table is to send this back to city, uh, to the committee. Motion and a second. And Mr. Morrow has now said he's willing to modify that, to send it back to the committee to hold a special committee meeting as soon as we can meet the 48-hour legal requirement.
My next question for council is, what if the committee member, what if we can't have a quorum? What if that proposal doesn't fit with the schedules of the committee meetings or the committee members?
You gotta have a quorum.
Well, I, yeah, I think you could modify your motion to hold it as soon as possible after the legal requirement is met and when committee members are present enough to have a quorum.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I, my question of that is, so...
And it's not political.
And I, again, hate to be repeating myself, but what makes this tricky is that we don't, we're like, "DOT could be out there right now painting, and we don't know." So, I, if, if the committee doesn't meet in time, or if city council doesn't make the final decision in time, and DOT goes out there and paints, what will we see?
Well, fortunately, the plan that we originally went with...
Nothing.
... requires fewer lines than the other alternatives, and so I think it can be added to. Uh, if we adopted the original plan and then decided to amend it, as some of these other images have depicted, it would just require the crew to come back and add some more lines rather than erase the ones that they've already installed.
Right.
Um, so I don't think it'd be the end of the world if the lines went down and then we went back to amend them.
But this block will, they will paint this block like it is shown here, correct?
Yes.
It is only the block south of Jordan that will be, remain unpainted?
Correct.
And will they paint Jordan, West Jordan Street with the...
No, no, sir. It's been painted by us.
That's not their street.
Oh, right, 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 right. Okay. Okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Morrow.
Yeah. So I think to the point of this discussion that if, if they go ahead and paint before, then we don't need a special meeting. Uh, we'll just have our regular meeting. And, but we do need to go ahead and have this on the agenda. All the, all the members really wanted this to be all, whatever is decided, that it be done in the thermoplastic paint. Um, and I think all the members think that we need to not postpone this decision any further. So at the next meeting, we should have this on the agenda, so that we can, um, you know, if we're gonna paint something in front of looking glass, uh, if that's gonna be painted by the city, then, then, you know, the committee can decide that. But we don't have to have a special meeting for that necessarily. But if we can have a special meeting before they paint it and get the city council to do that, that would be fine. I mean, I, I would rather have the committee make this decision. I agree. I was just concerned about the time, uh, constraints of getting this done. And, you know, and not, I'll, as a chair of this committee, I'll take responsibility that we did not act when we had the opportunity to, and we did, uh, and we're sitting here now having this conversation. So, um, that would be fine.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Could you restate the motion so that we?
The motion, as I heard it, is that this item will be sent back to the downtown Master Plan Committee, who will hold a special meeting that meets the 48-hour legal requirement and as soon after that as possible to have a legal quorum to hold the committee. And then it will come back to council for final decision.
Also, perhaps at a special meeting.
Also, yes. That was suggested, too.
All right.
That's what I had to, Mayor.
Everyone clear on the motion that is on the table? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I think with that, we will take a five-minute break. Thank you, everybody. And for the public, just a reminder that all of our committees are open to the public, and there is public comment at every committee meeting. And so you are more than welcome, and we will publish and put the word out on when that special committee meeting will meet. So all of the businesses know.
Register with the city clerk by printing your name, address, and phone number on the sign-in sheet. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Be concise, avoid repetition, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. And I will give a warning when you have 30 seconds left. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. This is a time to provide your comments, but not to ask questions. A public hearing is not inappropriate than you for a question and answer session. Okay, and we have one individual who has signed up, and that is Mr. Lawrence Van Antwerp.
Even though I'm not a member of the city, I do live, my property borders the property of 5389. I've been there for 20 years, and I, they've been working on clearing the land already for at least the last year that I know of. They used to use it just for mulching. But now, I'm not supposed to answer a question, but I'm concerned. What are you going to, when are they going to stop? They're going to come right up to my property line? Are they going to leave a bit of the wood, the little woods they have there? And if they're going to my property line, I feel they should put up a fence. Their complete property is all right next to me. They're right on my property line, and we share that, up to the point where their line doesn't cover all my property, then they turn to a right. And that is still the city's property there. So it's not a question, it's just that I want to be assured, is this going to be, what are they going to use? I understand that it might be to a private owner, or sell it to a private owner, but I'm curious, what, I know it's, it's a question. What type of, what are they going to use that property for? Are they going to use it for bicycle trails, walking trails, housing? I'd like to know, because my property value is, it's going to affect my property value. So I'm concerned that it doesn't affect my property value. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, that is the only person that's signed up for the public hearing. Counsel, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and let me just say, although we do not address questions directly in a public hearing, staff has noted your questions, and staff will get back to you with information.
I believe one of his questions is going to be answered by Aaron's next presentation.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the next public hearing, which is the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Brevard, city-owned parcel on Casher's Valley Road, pin 8585, Tac 19, Tac 5389. And Mr. Bland.
Yes, so again, this is a city-initiated rezoning of the same parcel, being done concurrently with the previously discussed annexation. So in addition to bringing the entire property into the city limits, we are also looking to zone the entire property, the same district. You can see there's two different shades of yellow. It is split zone, the area inside the city limits is general residential eight, and the area outside is general residential four. This proposal, as advertised, would rezone the entire parcel to neighborhood mixed use, which is the, what the Public Works facility is zoned next door. The intention of the rezoning is to upzone the parcel and make it more marketable before the sale of it through the upset bid process, as outlined in that resolution declaring it surplus property. The intent, then, is for the revenue of the sale to go towards supporting affordable housing initiatives. The future land use map identifies this parcel as a neighborhood activity center minor character area, and the recommended zoning districts for that character area are either neighborhood mixed use or residential mixed use. So the neighborhood mixed use zoning district is in conformance with our future land use map. Residential mixed use would not be suggested for this parcel, since there is no other RMX in the area, and there could be spot zoning concerns. But since there is adjacent NMX, it would be appropriate. However, rezoning this NMX might have repercussions on the marketability of the property, because single-family houses are not permitted within NMX. So the goal of maximizing the sale price to help fund affordable housing initiatives, we need to consider that trade-off in potential property values. There's also some other differences. Neighborhood mixed use allows 15 dwelling units per acre. GR8 allows eight. The planning board discussed this and weighed those different options, and ultimately, at their August meeting, recommended rezoning it to neighborhood mixed use. And in accordance with the state statutes, they also forward you the statement of consistency. Again, this is just for public hearing purposes, no action is required at this time. But note that, since this was advertised to rezone it to neighborhood mixed use, you do have the option, when you do take action, to rezone it to a less intense district, which GR8 is. So you do have both of those options before you when it comes time to take action. That's all I have.
Counsel, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. No one signed up to speak at this public hearing. I will, however, ask, because of the connection between these two items, Mr. Van Antwerp, do you wish to speak in this public hearing at all? Or ask any additional questions?
Yes, I will. Do I have to come up?
Yeah, yes, you need to come up, and it, it just wasn't clear that these two were related.
It's still not clear, because what do you, how do you define mixed use?
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, well, those are some of the questions that staff will definitely take for action, and will get back to you directly with. Okay. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We will move on to our third public hearing. The proposed amendments to the city of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance to make various minor changes. And Emily Brummer, our senior planner, is going to present this.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a staff-initiated text amendment to make a number of smaller revisions to the UDO that don't necessarily require an entirely new, large text amendment, so we put them all together. I'll walk through them as quickly as possible, but there are quite a few of them. The first item here is aviation facilities. There's been a recent uptick in the use of ultralight aircrafts in Transylvania County. Facilities for training, takeoff, landing, and other, you know, related airborne activities can have significant land use implications. And so we have proposed adding that as a new land use category in the use matrix, and have it be special use permit only within the general industrial zoning district. The next item is home occupation. The current standards for home occupations are pretty complex and require a permit, but the proposed changes simplify the standards to ensure that the business is truly incidental and residential in nature, and if that is, in fact, the case, a permit would not be required. Third, taprooms and tasting rooms. This is a small change to the definition that just states that the tasting rooms, taprooms and tasting rooms are ancillary to the production of beer and may serve alcoholic beverages produced off-site, in addition to those produced on-site. Accessory structures, this is kind of consolidating and moving around some of the, some of the provisions that are within Chapter Two and the provisions that are in Chapter Five, which is the architectural standards. Portico, this is in Chapter Five, and there is one item, B4, is erroneously included in this adoption of, in the initial adoption of Chapter Five. Tree protection, this is clarifying that all properties that are subject to the North Carolina Residential Code do not need to secure a tree removal permit unless that property is within the steep slope area or the moderately steep slope area, as those land uses are not required to plant trees or do landscaping. So it really doesn't make a lot of sense for them to come back and get a permit when, when that's something that's not required of them. Oning signs and canopy signs. Chapter Five, when we adopted those, added kind of a slightly different definition and usage of the word canopy. And so we have made some of the tweaks to the sign chapter, now that that usage is in there. And we've also clarified that by adding the definitions with that new usage from Chapter Five. Encroachment section, this is also very similar with canopies. This, we are now incorporating canopies into the encroachment permit, encroachment section as we have with onings. Construction signage, this allows for construction signs to be part of a development permit, but they must meet ordinance requirements, and it outlines, outlines those within that section. Technical review committee, very minor changes here to clarify the TRC process and allow for all department directors to have a designee. Incomplete applications, the current ordinance only gives the applicant 14 days to revise an application, or else they would have to resubmit. That would also mean submitting a new permit fee or things like that. And so we've instead amended this section so that the applicant is provided at least 30 days to be able to, before they have to resubmit. Professional services, this codifies the administrator's ability to secure services in, the services of a qualified professional in reviewing our applications. This provision has historically been included only in our fee schedule, and we're proposing to put it in the actual code as well. Permit expiration, this is a change to the definition of start of construction, which is used to determine when a project has commenced and when the permit has expired. And this language is also further tweaked in some minor ways to reflect North Carolina general statutes. And the last item here is waiting periods for refiling applications. A recently adopted state law prohibits waiting periods on refiling applications when they were denied or withdrawn. The proposed change now reflects that state law. But this one item, this waiting periods for refiling applications, did not go to Planning Board as it was adopted on October 6th, which was after the Planning Board discussed this item. However, this is in line with what is required of us by state law. The Planning Board reviewed the proposed amendments at their meeting on September 23rd and unanimously recommended in favor of its adoption. And in accordance with state law, they also submit a statement analyzing the consistency of this proposal. Though these revisions are not explicitly mentioned in the city's plans, we are charged with continuing to improve the city's UDO, and thus, this is consistent with that. And again, this is just a public hearing, so no action is requested at this time. But if there are questions, I'm happy to answer.
Counsel, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is open. No one signed up to speak at this public hearing. Counsel, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is closed. However, I will open this for any questions or comments from counsel before we move on. And Mr. Wise, any questions?
I have, no, that was pretty comprehensive. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Holder.
No questions, and thank you. It was very comprehensive. Now I'm really confused. No, it was very good. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Morrow?
Thank you, Emily.
Mr. Daniel?
Again, impressive work. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, lots of, lots of housekeeping stuff, so that's good to see. Just one quick question on the revocation of a development permit. It says, you know, if the work authorized by, the permit is suspended or abandoned for a period of at least one year, the permit can be canceled. I assume, is that, how do we determine when work is, stops on a project? Is that just by?
Yeah, so that is going to be much more of a fluid thing. A lot of it has to do with vested rights, and also being able to determine when projects have not been moving for a long time. With our, the way that our permits are structured and the way that they work is that if you have started construction, it resets the clock. And so being able to understand if you've done any kind of site work, then that's when the start of construction occurs. And so usually, we know when things are not moving forward, and can also work with, reach out to the building department, and one of us will have known if something is not moving forward.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to get some information on that. But there is a number of vested right concerns as well that we would, we would also navigate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other, all right, we will move on to our fourth public hearing. This is the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Brevard, five parcels at the intersection of Pisgah Drive and Medical Park Drive. And Mr. Bland is presenting.
Yes, let me move over to that part of town. So the planning department has received an application from First Victory Incorporated for rezoning of five properties located in the Pisgah Drive neighborhood. These five right here, corner of Pisgah Drive and Pisgah Drive. They are currently located adjacent and within the, adjacent to Transylvania Regional Hospital, and they are within the hospital's conditional zoning district. That's why they're this brown color, just like these properties to the south. That's the hospital campus. And this proposal is to remove them from that conditional zoning district and, district, and place them into the general residential eight, which is the yellow that you see all of Pisgah Drive and Temple Church Road is currently zoned. So again, it would remove them from the conditional zoning district and allow them to be developed in accordance with all the typical standards of general residential eight as a part of the larger Pisgah Drive neighborhood, which is largely built out. The future land use map designates these properties as the traditional neighborhood character area for which general residential eight is an appropriate district. Therefore, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's long-range plans for the area. The planning board discussed this request at their September meeting and voted in favor of the proposal. And as always, they submit the attached consistency statement as well. And again, this is just a public hearing presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And we do have representatives from the applicant here as well.
All right, counsel, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open. No one has signed up to speak at this public hearing. Counsel, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I will open for questions or comments from counsel. Mr. Daniel, any questions?
No, this seems pretty straightforward to me.
Mr. Baker?
So the map we're looking at shows buildings, but that's no longer the case.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so there's no concerns with non-conformities or anything like that? No questions?
Mr. Wise?
No questions.
Ms. Holder?
Do we know what we're building, or did you say it, I missed it?
Well, in a rezoning, you need to be comfortable with whatever the new district allows. I would assume it would be housing, but it would be, they could build anything that's allowed by general residential eight. We're not, this isn't a development proposal, it's just a rezoning at this stage.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Morrow?
I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, that's the end of our public hearings. We will move on to consent and information on the agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. The tax settlement report of September 2025. Council Public Works and Utilities Committee minutes, August 28, 2025. Council Housing Committee minutes, September 9, 2025. Council Parks, Trails, and Recreation Committee minutes, September 17 of 2025. And the item that was added, Resolution Number 2025, Tac 68. Resolution appointing designated agents for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Consent is approved. We will move on to new business. The first item under new business is the Davidson River Pedestrian Bridge Extension, and Mr. Paul Ray, our planning director, is going to present.
Mayor, while Paul's coming up, I need to preface his presentation with a bit of bad news. We found out today that the toll credits grant that we got a few weeks ago, while we still get to keep the grant, and while that's still going to let the Tannery North project proceed, we thought at the time, and this is what we were told at the time, that the toll credits would cover our match for the original carbon reduction grant for the Tannery North project. And so we would be able to put about $110,000 that we had budgeted in the budget for that match back. Well, we found out today that that's not true after all. We have to pay that match after all, which isn't a big deal, because I said, as I said, we budgeted it, we've got the money there. But the money we thought was freed up to fund other projects, perhaps this one, is now going to have to be used for its original intent. And so if you'd like to proceed with this one, we'll have to find the money somewhere else, but as you'll hear in the presentation momentarily, we do have some capacity in this fund.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Ray?
I love starting my presentation off with bad news. This item is related to the Davidson River Pedestrian Bridge, which was completed in 2024 in partnership with NCDOT and the US Forest Service. And the bridge provides safe crossing over Davidson River for pedestrians and bicyclists. Currently, there's a small gap between the bridge's boardwalk approach and where the new NCDOT sidewalk will begin along US 276, once the roundabout project is completed. To address this, we are proposing the construction of the Davidson River Pedestrian Bridge Connector Path, a short but critical trail segment that will link the bridge directly to the forthcoming sidewalk improvements at the entrance to Pisgah National Forest. We are requesting council's approval to submit a grant application to the Transylvania County Tourism Development Authority Destination Infrastructure Committee in the amount of $25,000 to support this project. If awarded, the city would cover the remaining cost of $23,411.82. The connector path includes two trail sections. The first section is 42 feet long and 10 and 1/2 feet wide, and will be constructed of large gray flagstone pavers on aggregate base, creating a durable level surface at the steepest climb up to the road. The project lies, I'm sorry, the second section is approximately 35 feet long and will be compacted gravel framed in a heavy flagstone border with a large boulder set at the transition point to serve as a bench, natural bench. The project lies on US Forest Service property and within the NCDOT right-of-way. The construction will require coordination with the Pisgah Forest Ranger District, NCDOT, and Pisgah Conservancy, which will serve as the contractor lead. The fiscal impact is, like what Mr. Hooper said, if the TDA grant is awarded, the remaining cost of $23,411 would be funded through Fund 78, the multi-use path fund, which has sufficient funds. Staff is asking council to approve the attached resolution authorizing submission of the grant application. Council also has the option to reject it.
All right. Counsel, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open for discussion. Mr. Morrow?
It's overdue. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, just a quick question on the two different sections. Is there a reason why we need the two different surfaces?
I thought this is the same thing. It's because of the climb up to the road. They wanted that to be more durable, hard surface made of paver stones rather than a gravel. But where it flattens out, they're okay with it being gravel.
Right.
Framed in flagstone.
Okay. And this is somewhat of an unrelated question, but it does have to do with where this eventually goes, which is into the, the roundabout project section. And I know we've had some discussion about the sidewalk that will eventually sort of link into this. Is there any update on, on what we've heard from DOT on that?
I asked for a cost estimate on that widening of the sidewalk. We have an estimate for it to be 10 feet wide on one side, but only 5 feet wide on the other side, which is, you know, on the dolly side, which is kind of odd. There is going to be a 5-foot-wide bicycle lane on both sides, and so what staff has asked for is a cost estimate for widening the sidewalk on both sides of the road to 8 feet, which is our standard sidewalk width on major thoroughfares. So we would still have a bike path, it would be a bike lane, and then we would have 8-foot-wide sidewalks on both sides of the road on 276, leading up to the roundabout. And once we have all those options and cost estimates from DOT, we'll bring them to city council to decide.
Okay. And, but the, what's the width of the sidewalk around the roundabout?
Well, that's 10 feet.
That's 10 feet?
Right.
Okay, is there a reason why we didn't ask him for the 10 feet?
Well, there's not enough right-of-way, for one thing, on, on the dolly side of the road. There's, it's questionable whether or not we're going to have enough right-of-way for even 8 feet wide. We thought it would look kind of funny to have 5-foot-wide sidewalk on the dolly side of the road and a wider sidewalk on the hog side. There are 10 feet around the roundabouts because the bike lanes don't go through the roundabout. They have a slip lane for the bikes to go off the road, onto the 10-foot path to go on the circle part, and we take that under a bike lane. So where they have a bike lane on the road, straight sections, they don't seem to need a 10-foot-wide bike path, because we have facility for bikes. That's the DOT rationale, the reason between bikes.
Yeah, it's a stupid rationale, is what it is. It's a ridiculous rationale, because if you're on a bike, and I'm not mad at you, I'm mad at DOT again, sorry to everybody that's here, but if you're on a bike on a separated path, if there's a, if there's a bike lane in the highway, that's a death trap, I'm not going to use that, I'm just not. So I get what they're saying that, well, there's a bike lane right there, just get into the bike lane. But like, that's not how the world works, especially when there's a really nice bridge, 10-foot-wide path that we're talking about here that's leading them to that.
Right.
So I know that's a completely different discussion.
Asking a question, Councilmember Baker. So since the Acusta, excuse me, the Estito Trail approaches the forest from the south, and that's the side of the road that the 10-foot path would be on, are you okay with having a path of two different lengths on both sides? The north side of the road would presumably have significantly less bike traffic and might not need a 10-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the, if it's between not having 10 feet on the southern side of the road and, and having it, then yes, I would prefer that we have at least 10 feet on the south part of.
And that's one of the options we would bring to council. We wanted to bring you several different options.
Yeah.
8 feet wide is still wide enough, really, for a bike to ride on.
Right.
So we wanted to give you that option as well.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no comment.
Ms. Holder?
Thank you, no comments or questions.
Mr. Wise?
No comments.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. All right, that is the end of our new business, and we will move on to remarks and future agenda considerations. And we will start with Mr. Wise.
You always start with me.
I do not.
That's okay. Thanks for everyone coming to talk to us tonight. As usual, your voices are the only voices that matter, although we talk a lot. I would like to say that no matter which side of the fence you land on, we saw a lot of people exercising their First Amendment rights this weekend peacefully, and that's why I love America, because you can do that. And again, it's important that we understand those rights and, and use them. And that's all I've got.
Ms. Holder? All right, Ms. Holder?
I don't have any comments tonight. I'm, I agree, we're glad to see everybody, and good to see you guys here tonight, too. And just thank y'all for coming in and caring about our great city of Brevard.
Mr. Morrow?
In light of what Rodney Lox has said recently about informing our public about what we, our projects are underway, I had, I had a question too, this week, too, about what's going on with Pickle Summer Park. All the bricks are gone and they're noted, blah, blah. So it might be nice if we also put a little sign down there, just explain what we're doing and investment and blah, blah, blah. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And then I know Paul's looking for another sign that hopefully we'll find. Right, do we just move it somewhere?
Mr. Daniel?
I'll just offer a shout-out to the Harbor Brevard's Moms Mabley rap on the pedestal. For me, that sort of completes the story there. To have the person that I am familiar with, Moms Mabley, so that, kudos. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
I don't have any comments tonight. I mean, I had comments earlier. I did it all already.
Okay, that's enough. Mr. Attorney?
Because I respect Mr. Sankey so much, I'm going to answer his question from earlier, which is that, you know, really, as a municipality, we don't have a whole lot to do with private development, and it's still in the hands of a private developer. We own it. We're obviously paying great attention to what's going on in that, in that lot, and we hope to see what was, to see a project that's in conformity with what was agreed to when the city sold it to the original developer so many years ago. And I know that's vague, and I apologize for the vagueness, but that's the best I can give you.
All right, that's a lawyerly answer. Okay, Madam Clerk.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Mayor and Council, it's my honor tonight to announce Chase Owen as the new chief of the Brevard Fire Department. If that name's familiar to you, it should be. He is currently the chief of the Conestee Fire and Rescue Department and also the operations captain with the Transylvania County Sheriff's Office and a part-time firefighter for the Brevard Fire Department. And so the guy clearly has a lot of experience in the public safety field. He's seen the Conestee Fire Department through a number of significant events, including Hurricane Helene and the Table Rock Complex fire over the past year. He's shown a great aptitude for the science of firefighting, but in my opinion, he's also got great leadership abilities. He's level-headed, he's respected. The folks in our department know and like him already, and so I'm happy to announce that he will be joining our team on November 10th. And between now and then, we will schedule an introductory event for him and likely a swearing-in ceremony at one of our meetings in November. So please join me in welcoming Chase Owen to our team.
All right, well, wonderful news. Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. Just a couple of things, I, I just want to reemphasize what Mr. Wise said. We had quite a large demonstration in downtown Brevard on Saturday. I think it's the largest one I've ever seen. I've seen the estimate of about 1,800 people at it, and it was peaceful. We had no incidents, we had no injuries, and that is just a tribute to our community that, you know, people can come out, they can express themselves, which is one of our treasured rights as Americans, and that we respect that right. And I just want to thank the community, to everybody that obeyed all the rules. I want to thank the police who helped work with the marshals that were out there to maintain order and safety throughout that day. And so it was very much a successful demonstration of our community expressing their viewpoint. We, this coming weekend, we have another great big event coming. We have Halloween Fest on Saturday. And again, we'll be relying on our police, on our public works, on our fire department, on Harbor Brevard, and on all, and all of the volunteers who make these festivals possible. But this festival is going to be even better than our previous Halloween Fest, because it goes from, I think it's 10:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. Yeah, so instead of ending at 5:00, it's going to continue on with music, we'll have the Beer Garden, and of course, we have all the fun family events of Halloween. We have the costume contest, we have the animal costume contest, always a favorite. We have, I think, hula-hooping, and you, you name it, it's happening out there. And so we look forward to a wonderful, safe Halloween Fest, and I appreciate everybody that worked so hard to put these events together so that our community can come out, you know, really, and just enjoy the holiday and enjoy that fellowship together. So Halloween Fest, then of course, on Halloween night, the following Friday, we will have trick-or-treating. We will be closing the streets that we always close for trick-or-treating. So of course, Maple Street and Park Avenue, and I think I might be missing one over by Park, I, I'm not sure, but those are the two main streets that are closed. And so we look forward to that. I understand last year, on Maple Street, they had 4,000 children come to their homes. So that is an incredible number. My house on Park Avenue, we average about 1,000. So again, it's just an incredible time for the community and for our children. And again, thank you to staff that's going to be working to make sure that that happens and that everyone is safe and is having a good time, and to the community members that live on those streets that go out and provide the candy to all of those thousands of children. So that's just absolutely great, so. And just a final reminder that early voting is going on, and I encourage everybody to exercise your voting rights and vote in the municipal elections. Early voting goes until 1 November, and of course, Election Day is on the 4th. And with that, I believe I need a motion to go into closed session for personnel or employment purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Please stop the broadcast and please clear the room.